And then I. Hit record and I will turn it over to Ben Dobbs.
Good afternoon, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good afternoon. Thank you to everyone for appearing today. There's now 1:00 PM exactly on March 29th, 2022, and in accordance with public notice issued by the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources, the department hereby opens the public hearing on the proposed 225 CMR 14 and 225 CMR 15 renewable energy portfolio standard class one and class two or RPS regulations. As stated in the public notice, the proposed RPS regulations address policy requirements, including changes required in order to implement section 32 of chapter eight of the Acts of 2021. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive verbal and written testimony on the proposed RPS regulations. As indicated in the public notice, written testimony will be accepted until 5:00 PM on Friday, April 1st. This public hearing is being recorded and will be posted to the department's website. The department requests that, to the extent possible, parties also submit written copies of their testimony. It is department practice to recognize any public official wishing to provide verbal or written testimony and allow them to proceed at the beginning of the hearing. If there are any elected officials present today, please come forward at this time and be recognized.
Ben, is there any other comments that you have?
That concludes the introduction.
Thanks so much, Ben. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Eric Stalter. I'm the Director of the Renewable Energy Division here at Department of Energy Resources. I am joined in the room today with John Wassom, our RPS and APS manager, Jerry Bingham, Project Coordinator, and then remotely is our Counsel Sarah McDaniel as well. For the hearing, we will be calling upon people who raised their hand in the Zoom webinar to testify. For those that are online, their hand, there should be a little raised hand button at the bottom in which they can raise. For those that are dialed in, you can press star nine in order to raise your hand. We will be calling upon, as Ben noted, we will be calling upon elected officials first. What I'd ask is those elected officials to please raise their hand at this time. And in addition, please indicate via the question and answers section that you are here and prepared to provide testimony. As we proceed through the list, we will call upon your name and I will unmute you. After you are unmuted, you will also need to unmute yourself on the platform online by clicking the microphone to unmute yourself. For those that have dialed in, after you've been called and been recognized, you'll be prompted on your phone to press star six in order to unmute yourself. To reserve enough time to have everyone present their testimony, each person will have four minutes in which to speak. If there is more time available at the end of the hearing, people will have an opportunity to testify additionally. Deo is also accepting written comments until April 1st, as noted by our counsel. Today, we have interpretation services in Spanish, Portuguese, Chinese, and American Sign Language. There's options at the bottom of your screen for interpretation where you can go into those separate rooms and hear interpretation services that you seek. For those that are seeking ASL interpretation, just we ask that you put your screen into gallery view so that you'll see the interpreter as well as myself as we're go through. We kindly ask that everyone speaks slowly for the interpreters to provide them an opportunity to undertake the translation services. And give me one moment to take a look at the elected officials and then I'll start going through the list. Thank you. It appears that we have one individual, Sally Pick, so I will unmute you now.
Hi there, can you hear me?
We can hear you, Sally. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I'm an appointed member of the Town of Montague Energy Committee, not elected, but if you want to vote for me, that's fine. So yeah, my name is Sally Pick. I live in Montague. It's in Western Massachusetts near the Connecticut River. I'll take some time for people to interpret. My comments are informed by my experience as a climate activist with Climate Action Now of Western Massachusetts, which works for climate solutions. I'm deeply concerned about the increasingly frequent and impactful climate crisis. Already, thousands of Massachusetts residents and businesses have experienced devastating coastal and inland flooding, washing away or damaging homes, roads, and businesses. Unprecedented intense localized storms and drought with resulting crop losses and forest fires that we experience out here in Western Mass especially. And we're just getting started. As I'm sure you know, the IPCC has told us recently that we must act at a sprint to avoid the most disruptive consequences to our lives, food sources, and economy here and across the globe. As you are well aware, the roadmap law signed by Governor Baker last year mandates a minimum 50% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions by 2030 during this critical decade for action. Considering incentives for RPS in the RPS for biomass electric generation plants is out of keeping with this mandate. Even if the biomass plants are in other states, we would be outsourcing our greenhouse gas emissions while we've made an emission reduction commitment that is global, not just relevant to Massachusetts. It is frankly beyond my comprehension how Massachusetts can justify allowing, including biomass electric generation plants to be incentivized by the RPS incentives that ratepayers contribute to in order to support clean renewable energy development. It is well established that biomass electric generation is inefficient, highly greenhouse gas emitting. Results in forests that should be maintained as carbon sinks, along with their other ecological services, to be cut as feedstocks for these facilities. And it's highly polluting to neighboring communities, enough that Massachusetts had previously disallowed biomass plants in environmental justice communities that are already overburdened with the health consequences of poor air quality. There is no justification for this loophole in the RPS that would result in ratepayers footing the bill to make biomass plants viable in New Hampshire, Maine, and other states in the name of clean renewable energy, nor for allowing the burning of biomass in environmental justice communities. We must instead invest and support electric generation from non-greenhouse gas emitting sources, including wind and solar power. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we will call on Paul Dale.
Hello, I am Paul Dale. I'm the Energy Committee Chair of the Massachusetts Sierra Club. On behalf of our 100,000 members and supporters, I speak in opposition to DOE R's amendments that reduce or completely eliminate the core requirements of the 2012 RPS rules, which restrict biomass eligibility. A major and perhaps the major effect of the proposed changes will be to send millions of our ratepayer dollars out of state every year to Maine, New Hampshire, and other New England states to subsidize CO2 emissions in those states, worsen health from the biomass pollution, and increase environmental harm. Massachusetts residents don't want this, but no doubt the logging and biomass industry has lobbied hard for these changes. A classic example of special interests crusading for benefits that they need or want at the expense of the common good and the public interest. Back in 2012, over 100,000 people endorsed a ballot petition that would have banned biomass from the RPS. This was withdrawn when the DOE R agreed to the current restrictive provisions around biomass. I'm here to tell you that the people you serve are outraged and insist that you withdraw these destructive changes. Biomass power plants produce more harmful particulate matter pollution than coal plants per unit of electricity. They release more greenhouse gas emissions today than can ever be recovered by 2050 and result in the loss of CO2 from sequestration and deplete our soils and ecosystems. What the changes would do is allow dozens of existing polluting biomass power plants across New England to qualify for Massachusetts ratepayer subsidies. This is not the way to protect Massachusetts jobs. Most of the money and the jobs and the industry profits will go out of state to prop up these failing power plants. From a Massachusetts jobs and health perspective, we have a much better option in-state via wind, solar, storage, building efficiency, and electrification. These in-state jobs are what we should be developing. The Climate Roadmap Law provides $12 million a year to Mass CEC to provide workforce training, education, and professional development, job placement, startup opportunities, and grants promoting participation in the Commonwealth's Clean Economy. This is a good start. This is the way we should be headed. The biomass is contrary to the Climate Roadmap Law. The out-of-street biomass plants selling renewable energy certificates would allow Massachusetts to claim a higher amount of renewable energy against our emissions reductions mandates. Whereas in reality, the claim would result from subsidizing CO2 emitting plants beyond our borders. From a health standpoint, we would be subsidizing an industry worse than coal and particulate pollution, affecting the health of residents in other states that don't have our environmental justice protections. Should we allow that? The proposed changes are harmful to Massachusetts on many levels. We ask DOE R to reconsider. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we will call on Evan Delollio.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Excellent. Hi, my name is Evan Delollio. I'm Vice President with Roberts Energy Renewables, a renewable energy development company based in Asheville, Massachusetts. I also am a member of the Board of Directors of the Massachusetts Forest Alliance, and I'm speaking today with comments regarding the proposed RPS regulations specific to category A and category B, as you defined in your rulemaking announcement. I'd like to say on a positive note that I do commend your decision to simplify the process of qualifying woody biomass fuel in the RPS for purposes of the paperwork related to forestry services. It's very challenging for foresters to be able to supply chipped slash to existing facilities based off of the current 2012 regulations in that regard. We think that the new regulations are simplified and are in line with what is already required in the alternative portfolio standard, so reduce foresters' time and actually not take away from the benefit of the landowner for performing this work. I diverge, however, from concurrence with your recommended regulation changes as they pertain to the environmental justice setbacks as written. While I understand the need to protect our vulnerable populations, the proposed change has some concerns. Several months ago, when the EJ requirement was proposed by the department, no maps were made available to the public. We were very surprised when the statewide map was officially released and 90% of the state was off limits even to very small woody CHP systems. It was even further shocking when the department made known that this would also be interpreted against biogas facilities if the gas was manufactured from waste wood chips rather than manure or food waste. The department's claim that the EJ limitations were to prevent large-scale utility biomass, which is harmful to public health, does not make sense as the 2012 rules already allowed for a 60% efficiency limitation, which effectively eliminated those types of facilities from being authorized. Mainstream administrative bodies at the federal level, as well as several states, recognize the value of small-scale CHP involving wood chips or biogas sourced from wood, including very progressive California currently administering such a program under their biomat program, very similar to Massachusetts's SMART program and implementation. To add further confusion and a request for clarification, it seems that there will be no allowances for any type of system again in 90% of the state, despite the fact that the Department of Environmental Protection is still in their EJ interpretation, allowing for non-major systems to have a secondary level of review during permitting, but at least not outright banning those systems. Furthermore, biogas energy systems that utilize woody material to produce gas are mostly biochar facilities as well. Biochar storing up to 80% or more carbon by weight was deemed to be by the IPCC one of the most obvious and easy-to-scale type of solutions for storing carbon on mass scale in the world. We are going to avoid any development of a sizable biochar industry in Massachusetts if this regulation continues to go into effect. It will penalize that industry for no reason as the emissions from the anaerobic digestion style engines associated with those facilities are analogous to the emissions that come from any of our digester facilities already permitted in Massachusetts and participating as a class one resource. Additionally, the fact that the DOE R is also changing these regulations to allow for the potential for very large facilities out of state while disallowing small facilities in Massachusetts, maybe even only measured in the hundreds of kilowatts per hour in rural communities, is somewhat puzzling. I believe this is an inconsistency with methodology and we would prefer that simply a limitation on system size be imposed as part of EJ in Massachusetts. Not an outright ban on all types of systems. It is not a one-solution-fits-all idea in our position and we would like to see a change in how this is drafted. Perhaps a two-megawatt limit or even a one-megawatt limit would be sufficient, but an outright ban does just not make sense. As a matter of fact, there have already been at least one example, has already been at least one example of Massachusetts of a facility that was of the type that even the TUE Committee has endorsed and members of that committee have endorsed in the past in terms of being an example of high-tech European technology on a small scale that could be implemented to produce CHP. However, it would not be allowed under this new proposal. Again, I thank you for your time. I reiterate that there should still be allowance for small systems in the existing RPS and even based on the changes going forward and that EJ should really only apply to large utility-scale plants. I also reiterate that it should not apply to biogas plants of any type as again, there is no difference in emissions from these generator sets, whether they be from manure, food waste, or woody material in the production of that gas. I thank you for your time and again, that is also based on DEP limitations to those types of generators. I thank you for your time and have an excellent afternoon.
Great, thank you. Next, we will have, excuse me, one second.
Apologies, could I just make a quick process point? Just a quick, okay.
Sorry, I was just working on wrong button click there. My apologies. Yeah, one of the panels has a question.
Yes, my apologies for the interruption. I just wanted to see if it's possible to please name me as a Spanish interpreter and also to remind all commenters about interpretation and just so that the speed can be something that can be interpreted and can be accessible to all.
Great, thank you. Let me work on making you a Spanish interpreter. One moment. Martha, you should be a Spanish interpreter now, correct? Thank you. Just as a reminder for folks, we do have translation services, so please speak slowly as you're presenting. Next, we will have Carl D'Souria.
Is my audio audible?
You are. Go ahead, Carl.
Thank you. My name is Carl Duran. I'm a resident of the Town of Conway, Massachusetts. And I'm here to, if I can just find my text, state my opposition to the change in the biomass regulations under consideration. The Massachusetts Next Generation Roadmap commits to net zero carbon emissions by 2050. Many who claim that biomass-fueled energy production is ultimately net zero advocate a 50- to 100-year timeframe for considering carbon payback for burning biomass. Opponents of biomass counter that because of the lag between emissions and uptake, studies taking this approach often find widespread use of wood fuel will cause emission spikes that could last for decades, hastening the pace of global warming. Researchers working with the Natural Resources Defense Council and Environmental Group concluded wood burning plants would have a higher net carbon emissions than a comparable coal plant, let alone a cleaner natural gas plant for the first four decades or more of operation. A similar study in the journal Sustainable Forestry in 2013 found that greenhouse gases from a power plant fired by wood from New England forests would outrank emissions from a similar coal-fired plant for nearly half a century. Given these numbers, burning biomass means carbon offsets would have to be found if the state is going to reach the 2050 zero emissions goal of the Next Generation Roadmap. Unfortunately, even 2050 may be a target too far in the future. Scientists predict we will introduce enough carbon to increase average temperatures two degrees centigrade by 2034, when the original goal was to keep global warming at or below the two-degree mark until 2100 to diminish the disastrous impacts of global warming. Even if the scientific predictions that biomass is ultimately carbon neutral prove true, the carbon payback is too far in the future to prevent very damaging results of climate change. Much less controversial are the negative health effects of burning biomass. The Natural Resource Defense Council points out that in a letter presented to the United States Senate, signed by the Allergy and Asthma Network, the American Academy of Pediatrics, the American Lung Association, the American Public Health Association, Asthma and Allergy Foundation of America, the National Association of County and City Health Officials, National Environmental Health Association, and Physicians for Social Responsibility. The Health Community condemned biomass-fueled energy stating, excuse me, biomass is far from clean. Burning biomass creates air pollution that causes a sweeping array of health harms from asthma attacks to cancer to heart attacks, resulting in emergency visits, hospitalizations, and premature deaths. No community should be saddled with this burden and as MasLive.com states, proposed biomass regulations would disproportionately impact 35 communities, mostly in Western Massachusetts. Since Governor Baker's office has revised its proposed changes that would now prevent some biomass plants like ones near Springfield, Mass. from qualifying for ratepayer subsidies, this would draw amounts to an admission that biomass plant emissions are toxic and damage the health of residents who live near them. Consequently, DOE R regulations should remain intact, so no citizens have to endure this unnecessary handicap. While we may have fewer citizens in Western Massachusetts, that fact should not translate to having to accept a lower standard of health for our families and their children. Unfortunately, the proposed changes in regulation will also allow other New England states to sell renewable energy credits to Massachusetts. As a result, the regulation changes will encourage producers in those other states to invest in more biomass energy production, magnifying the increase in climate change and injuring the health of citizens throughout the region. Since changing the regulations governing biomass-fueled energy production will certainly increase the region's contribution to climate change and global warming before 2050 and beyond, as well as the fact that burning biomass will seriously damage citizens' health in the communities where it takes place, I advocate the DOE R please leave the regulations governing biomass energy production in Massachusetts as they currently stand. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we will call on Johannes Epke.
Thank you so much, DOE R staff and two interpreters. I will try to speak slowly so that you can follow along. My name is Johannes Epke. I'm a staff attorney at Conservation Law Foundation, CLF, based in Boston, and I am testifying in opposition to inclusion of biomass in the RPS standards. As other folks have noted, burning wood is actually carbon emitting. It is not a non-carbon emitting power source, though technically renewable over a century or so. That is far longer than the period in which we need to address carbon emissions and climate change. For the purposes of the climate crisis we are currently facing, biomass is not a climate solution. It is a climate problem. Moreover, creating more of a market for wood products incentivizes cutting down trees. And burning wood is, as others have noted, terribly polluting with respect to traditional air pollutants, soot and smog and so forth. So what we're proposing to do here is bad for the climate, bad for forests, and bad for air quality. And we want to use taxpayer dollars to subsidize this energy source that we're supposed to go to actually clean energy like air and wind. When phrased like that, I think that it is it is unconscionable that we are using taxpayer dollars meant to subsidize wind and solar to make climate change worse and pat ourselves on the back calling it a climate solution. I think it's shameful. I think it is wrong. And I implore DOE R to pull these rules, to not make these rules final, to remove biomass from the RPS completely and to comply with what the legislature has been very clear on, as others have noted and others will note. The roadmap bill, the roadmap law, Global Women's Solutions Act demand that Massachusetts make more progress on climate change than this rule will allow us to do. This is a step in the wrong direction and it's going to hurt us long term. We will be submitting more detailed comments in writing. I really thank you for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you. Next, we'll call on Thomas Jernsian. Thank you. Next, we'll call on Thomas Jernsian.
Hi Eric, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much. My comments today are going to be, you had four different categories. This is going to be category D, other. And thank you for the opportunity to address the Department of Environmental Resources today. My name is Tom Jernsian. I'm a principal and co-founder of Commonwealth Resource Management Corporation. I represent the Coalition of Massachusetts An aerobic Digestion Facilities whose members own and operate eight landfill gas-to-energy facilities and 12 AD biogas-to-energy facilities in Massachusetts. These 20 projects comprise the extent of anaerobic digesters facilities operating in Massachusetts today. The projects generate 30 megawatts of clean, low-cost, continuous renewable, reliable electricity for the state of Massachusetts. The coalition was formed as a direct response to previous DOE are changes to the RPS Class 1 regulations. The changes put at risk the economic viability of all 20 Massachusetts projects. The DOE are has the opportunity to revitalize this important renewable energy and environmental infrastructure. And we asked today that the DOE are provide relief for these projects within the regulatory process to further amend the RPS Class 1 regulations. Without these 20 Massachusetts projects, the consequences include less low-cost renewable electricity, less reliability, less renewable energy diversity, less environmental protection, more greenhouse gas emissions, more fossil fuel electricity, higher cost to municipalities, and export of food waste to distant landfills. Last year, Commissioner Woodcock of the DOE are testified to the Joint Legislative Committee on Telecommunications Utilities and the Environment that the objective of the DOE are changes to RPS Class 1 regulations was to encourage development of low-cost renewable energy in Massachusetts. These 20 Massachusetts projects are low-cost renewables that exist. Therefore, to achieve its stated goal, the DOE are should make a further regulatory change to protect the economic viability of these 20 important projects. With amendments being made to the RPS Class 1 regulations, we encourage the DOE are to make a simple, easy change to these regulations. Specifically, we asked that the DOE are add a provision that states electric renewable generating sources that qualify as RPS Class 1 by converting biogas and/or landfill gas using AD biogas to energy or landfill gas to energy technologies herein anaerobic digestion technology and that are located in Massachusetts shall receive two RPS Class 1 renewable generation attributes for each megawatt hour of RPS Class 1 renewable energy generation to assure the economic viability. So that's a provision to assure the economic viability of these 20 Massachusetts projects under most of the plausible future scenarios. This change would need to be implemented by January of 2023. This narrow and targeted change represents less than 1% of the Massachusetts Rex supply and would not impact any other part of the RPS Class 1 regulations. Would be pleased to provide more information to the DOE are and thank you for listening to my testimony.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on Mary Ali Badgini.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Great, thank you. My name is Meire Badgini. I am testifying in opposition to the inclusion of biomass in the RPS. I am the Energy Justice Director at Community Action Works, a regional nonprofit that works side by side with everyday people to confront those who are polluting and harming the health of our communities. Community Action Works has been supporting campaigns against polluting energy infrastructure for decades, including the recent effort to stop biomass in Springfield. What I want to make really clear in thinking about biomass is that we know clean energy doesn't come out of a smokestack. The RPS program is designed to move our economy and our electric grid away from polluting sources of energy and fossil fuels. So the continuous efforts to open doors for Massachusetts ratepayer subsidies to be funneled toward biomass runs counter to the whole purpose of the program. As the facilitator of the regional Fix the Grid campaign to overhaul our energy system, I work with numerous community members in all six New England states who have been impacted by terrible air quality and air pollution. Folks who are fighting to protect themselves and their families from the harmful effects of burning stuff for energy. As others have pointed out, whether it's gas, oil, or wood, burning stuff for energy emits carbon dioxide and pollutants into the atmosphere, and that has harmful consequences. In ruling that no biomass within five miles of an environmental justice community could qualify for RPS subsidies, DOE are sent a clear message. Biomass is a polluting and unhealthy source of energy that should not further impact overburdened communities. So why are we then aiming to give biomass in other states clean energy dollars? It's time for our state to step up and continue to be the national leader when it comes to stringent, science-based standards that protect our communities and our future. Massachusetts ratepayers don't want our clean energy dollars subsidizing pollution here or anywhere. I urge you to amend your proposal and to remove biomass from the RPS completely. Again, the bottom line here is that clean energy does not come out of a smokestack. Thank you.
Thank you. And my apologies to everyone on my pronunciations on the names there. I'll do my best, but appreciate it. Next, we have James McCaffrey.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Oh, great. Thanks for the opportunity to testify today. My name is James McCaffrey. I'm the Legislative Director for New England Partnership for Policy Integrity. We're a science and data-driven nonprofit organization that uses advocacy, litigation, policy analysis, and strategic communications to promote policies to protect the climate ecosystems and people. PFPI, as you know, has submitted extensive written comments detailing our concerns about this proposal and the rollback of the RPS rules governing the use of woody biomass energy. These amendments that are proposed will primarily benefit existing inefficient and polluting biomass power plants in Maine, New Hampshire, and throughout the Northeast that currently do not qualify for the Massachusetts RPS. And this will be done at the expense of public health, forest protection, and our climate and our communities. One of our big concerns is that DOE are has never really provided a rationale for making these changes beyond saying that it wanted to streamline and align the RPS regulations with the alternative portfolio standard rules that were modified about seven or eight years ago. And this is sort of a little bit of a shell game because, of course, shortly after the Baker administration came in, you immediately went to work to weaken the APS standards, to develop APS standards that had significantly weaker standards than the existing 2012 RPS standards. And now here we are looping back and saying, oh, we need to align these regulations with the APS regulations, which have already weakened and which was pointed out by numerous, you know, residents of the Commonwealth scientists, public health advocates, you know, pretty much everyone was opposed to the changes in the APS rules because they represented a weakening of the standards. And everybody similarly is opposed to these rules because they simply follow in line with those and are weakening what we developed in 2012, which was based in science. So the big concerns that we have are that these amendments would allow highly polluting power plants in Maine, New Hampshire, and other states to begin to qualify for Massachusetts incentives. And the problems with this are that, as many other commentators have stated over and over again at numerous hearings over the past years, and you'll hear it many times today, burning wood for heat and power emits more carbon dioxide per unit of energy than coal and can increase greenhouse gas impacts for decades to centuries compared with fossil fuels. That simply is the science, and we know that you are aware of this science. We must be looking to protect and restore our forests at this time as natural carbon sinks. Every scientific and, you know, policy-based body or entity globally right now is all coming together and saying, we must be preserving our forests. We must be taking advantage of these as the most effective and single best tool as a carbon sink to fight climate change. And then finally, on the list of big concerns is that even when only wood residues are burned, as opposed to whole trees which are logged for fuel, woody biomass energy is still a net source of carbon for decades, well past any timeframe that is meaningful for us to take any kind of climate action that will actually have an impact and help us face this challenge that we are facing. To date, the only change that PFPI has supported was the new provision added last year that would prevent biomass power plants located in or within five miles of an environmental justice community from qualifying for the RPS program. The Commonwealth should not incentivize degradation of air quality anywhere in Massachusetts, and particularly not in communities already overburdened with pollution. In spite of that, now DER is actually backpedaling on even this provision by only applying it to new facilities. And I echo what others have said. If it is not okay for those communities, why is it okay for any community in Massachusetts or any community in any other state? Why are we exporting our pollution and our health impacts to other states? PFPI strongly supports increasing the percentage of renewable energy used in Massachusetts as the legislature required in the 2021 Climate Roadmap law. But it seems clear that DOE are seeking to meet some or all of this increase by simply backfilling it with biomass energy that is currently too polluting to qualify under our science-based rules. This is the opposite of climate leadership. DOE are Commissioner Patrick Woodcock acknowledged at the TUE hearing last July that these regulations will yield increased biomass production regionally. And that is simply unacceptable. We should be investing in new clean renewable energy sources to meet our renewable center requirements and not weakening existing science-based standards to allow more dirty biomass energy to qualify. I want to leave you with this one last thought. There is a new study out despite DOE are's claims that somehow this is better for the climate or better from the public health, which simply does not hold up to scientific scrutiny. But a study that's been released found that burning wood and biomass in buildings and in industry had a combined public health burden of at least 18,000 deaths nationally. That is higher than coal-fired power plants. So DOE are and the administration is about to embark on a program that will actually increase the public health burdens, increase our climate burdens over that of coal and in many cases over that of natural gas. And it's simply unacceptable that we'd be doing something like that at this time. I've been engaged in this issue since 2009 for a long time, and it's time for us to just recognize that the science developed in 2012 that resulted in the current regulations that mean that polluting biomass plants do not qualify for mass ratepayer dollars should be left in place and not gutted by this proposed rule. We ask you to please abandon these changes and do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll call on Adele Franks.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead.
Thanks for the opportunity to provide comments. My name is Adele Franks, and I'm speaking for Climate Action Now Western Massachusetts. We represent about 200 and 2,500 residents who are committed to provide a livable climate for all of us and those who come after us, including our children and grandchildren. The recently released IPCC report calls for nothing less than bold action in order to avert the most devastating impacts of climate disruption. And yet, the proposed loosening of the RPS regulations that we're discussing today regarding biomass plants would in fact set us backwards and increase our greenhouse gas emissions regionally. For this reason, we are opposed to the proposed DOE are changes to the RPS biomass regulations. The proposed weakened regulations would allow at a state biomass burning electricity plants to receive Massachusetts ratepayer incentives. So previously, those plants would not have been eligible because they didn't meet established efficiency standards. Why weaken these standards now? Since the RPS dollars that ratepayers provide are expressly for the purpose of increasing the amount of clean renewable energy on our electric grid, this redirecting of those dollars to prop up dirty, inefficient biomass burning plants would be a travesty. In addition, the new proposed changes would roll back the provision that would bar any biomass power plant from qualifying for the RPS if they're located in or within miles of an environmental justice community. And yet, now DOE are is proposing to exempt plants built before 2022 from the environmental justice requirements. This is just offensive, outrageous, and and simply inexplicable. What possible rationale could there be for these changes since they will not help us reach our climate goals? In fact, these DOE are proposed changes in the RPS regulations provide strong support for legislative remedy in the form of passage of S 2197 and H 3333. That would make biomass burning ineligible for ratepayer renewable energy incentives entirely. Massachusetts ratepayers do not want our clean energy funds to be used to incentivize old polluting power plants, no matter where they're located. And we ask that you withdraw this counterproductive loosening of our RPS regulations at this time. We need instead to drastically increase the amount of truly clean renewable energy generation in order to avert the worst consequences of climate change and to meet our climate goals. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we'll call on Naya Tenarowicz.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead.
Excellent. My name is Naya Tenarowicz. I'm a resident of Springfield, Massachusetts, and a member of the Springfield Climate Justice Coalition and of Climate Action Now Western Massachusetts. I am testifying in opposition to the proposed changes to the RPS. I live less than five miles from the proposed site of the Palmer biomass energy plant. I know what it is like to live in a sacrifice zone in a city targeted by polluting industries because our lives are considered expendable. I want to tell you a little of what it means to live in an EJ community. Our highly polluted air results in high rates of respiratory and pulmonary illness. An estimated one in five children in Springfield have asthma, and the Springfield Public School teachers in my family see the impact of this every single day. Almost as many adults have asthma or other respiratory illnesses. Our city's lungs struggle to bear the burden of pollution that has been forced upon us because corporations and Massachusetts regulatory systems had decided that our lives are expendable. All of this would only get worse if a biomass plant were built in this city. I was somewhat relieved when the EJ provisions were added to these proposed changes to the RPS, preventing any biomass plant built within five miles of an EJ community from receiving clean energy subsidies. But I was also furious that these proposed changes to the RPS would provide subsidies for biomass plants not in EJ communities. Pleasure by zones. All of this would only get worse. Sorry, I lost my spot in my thing. Um, the poisoning and polluting of those communities would be funded by Massachusetts ratepayer money. And then the DOE are weaken the language during the second pass at approving proposed changes to the RPS. The DOE are has decided that these protections for EJ's EJ communities own EJ communities only apply to new biomass energy plants. Now, regardless of whether it is in an EJ community or not, regardless of how dirty the plant may be, can qualify for ratepayer-funded clean energy subsidies. This is a shameful disregard of the well-being of any communities that are already dealing with the devastating impacts of biomass pollution and emissions. Let's take a look at the impact of that pollution. Burning woody biomass emits more CO2 than burning coal, along with emitting fine particulate matter, nitrogen oxides, sulfur dioxide, volatile organic chemicals, hydrochloric acid, mercury, lead, and other heavy metals. A new study, the same study that James McCaffrey mentioned, found that the health impacts of burning woody biomass are greater than the health impacts of burning coal and that it results in more deaths. Burning woody biomass is worse than burning coal, both in terms of emissions and health impacts. But these proposed changes to the RPS would qualify it for clean energy subsidies. I am appalled that the DOER sees the health, survival, and well-being of communities throughout the Northeast as expendable, that they are willing to use clean energy subsidies to fund power plants that kill even more people than coal power plants, that they are willing to give those subsidies to such a dirty, polluting industry at a time when we are in a desperate battle to decrease our greenhouse gas emissions before it is too late. As a young person in my twenties, I will live to see the consequences of the inaction of older generations and of your actions if you weaken the language of our clean energy regulations, which are currently some of the best in the country. If you fund these polluting power plants at this critical moment for the survival of our planet, history will not look kindly upon you. And there are lives at stake, lives that are worth just as much as yours. So it all comes down to this one simple ask: Withdraw these unethical, inhumane, climate-changing regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll call on Don Ogden.
Can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'll keep my comments short and speak slowly. I'm Don Ogden from the Enviro Show on WXOJ, WMCB, and WMNB. We are outraged by Governor Baker's administration's ongoing rollback of the clean energy policies like the RPS and APS. This rollback means Massachusetts ratepayers will subsidize old, dirty biomass plants in New Hampshire and Maine. We need to stop subsidizing burning trees for power or for commercial heating. Our Massachusetts clean energy dollars should go only to non-emitting energy sources. In addition, we need to preserve and protect trees, at least, at the very least, on our public lands for carbon capture and wildlife habitat in this time of climate crisis and the sixth great extinction. The Massachusetts Legislature must take action to stop subsidies for climate pollution. I strongly urge everyone to support an act to prevent biomass energy to protect the air we breathe, S 2197, H 3333, putting it into an omnibus bill if need be, which would prevent biomass energy from qualifying for renewable energy subsidies it does not deserve at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll call on Susan Thaberg.
Hi there. Thank you for holding this hearing. I am Susan Tiberish, and I am a co-founder of Climate Action Now and work with Springfield Climate Justice Coalition. Oh, I feel like I keep rewriting things to say in front of official bodies, but here we go. So I'm going to start to say it a little differently than the last few times. I invite each of you sitting in this room to take a moment to think about a younger person in your life, a child, grandchild, niece, nephew, student, any young people that you feel your heart opening when you think about them. And try to remember the last time that you were with them. So you get a really clear picture in your mind. What were they wearing? What was the sound of their voice? How did you feel being with them? Imagine them ten years from now. How might they have grown and changed? What are their passions, their hopes, their fears? Now, take a moment to imagine them in twenty years. How might they be feeling about us, the adults, when they were children? What beyond their passions, their hopes, and their fears, how may they be feeling towards us? Knowing that we were alive and functioning in 2022, when the ecosystem was crashing all around them. Imagine them in twenty years. What's the world going to look like in thirty years for them? Imagine that we continue on the path we're on right now, cutting down forests, the lungs of this planet, so that the biomass industry can profit, continuing to use dangers and polluting sources of energy like biomass. Imagine the future of this young person if we continue with business as usual. And now, I invite you to take a moment to imagine that today, March 29th, 2022, a group of people together on a Zoom call who had some power in this whole process, made a decision that could change this outcome, that from this day forward, they would do all in their power to protect the ecosystem we call home. And I invite you to consider my words, holding the image of this young person in your mind and in your heart. While on the verge of climate disaster and with positive feedback loops kicking in, which magnify the danger of the situation, DOER is up against a decision. And people have spoken very beautifully to all of the issues. So I'm going to focus on just one of the issues today, which is the public health impacts of burning biomass. And just to kind of reiterate what we probably all know in this room, because we have talked about it so many times, biomass electricity generation facilities are major air polluters, and they significantly worsen air quality in the communities and regions where they're constructed and wherever they're constructed and as they're operating. And just like coal plants, biomass plants produce soot, smog, and other pollutants that threaten public health and the environment. Emissions from biomass power plants contribute to acute and chronic health problems, including asthma, heart disease, diabetes, and more. Burning biomass emits large amounts of pollutants, just like burning other solid fuels such as coal. Burning organic material emits particulate matter, nitrogen oxides, carbon monoxide, sulfur dioxide, lead, mercury, and other hazardous air pollutants. Sometimes they're referred to as HAPs. Hazardous air pollutants are a group of one hundred eighty-seven toxics that, according to the EPA, are known or suspected to cause cancer or other serious health effects, such as reproductive effects, birth defects, adverse environmental effects. HAPs emitted in greatest quantities by burning biomass include the organic HAPs styrene, acrylene, and formaldehyde, and the acid gases hydrofluoric acid and hydrochloric acid. Biomass burners commonly emit ten tons or more of the acid gases, and from one to five tons of organic feed here. Even clean wood, that is, is defined as forestry-derived wood, as opposed to construction and demolition debris, which is also burned in biomass for biomass electricity. It emits these chemicals when burned, even if it's wood that's cut down in the forest and hasn't been, doesn't have lead paint on it or other other things on it, like burning construction from old buildings. Burning clean wood also emits non-negligible amounts of heavy metal. And of course, if you do burn what's euphemistically called urban wood, and that's what I was referring to a moment ago, that's wood that's from construction and demolition debris, significantly increases emissions of arsenic, chromium, copper, lead, and mercury, as well as dioxins, furants, and PCPs. Now, one person here referred to this article, which just came out on the Hill. I think it just came out today. It's titled Biomass Is Not Health-Neutral. I also had the opportunity to look at that article. And just to sum it up briefly, the authors of this article point out that encouraging the use of biomass for energy will increase air pollution, have public health impacts, and raise environmental justice issues around the siting of these facilities. And whether they're sited in Massachusetts or New Hampshire or in Maine, they're still, we all live in one climate here, and they're still polluting the residents, which are usually folks in environmental justice communities, and they're also poisoning our air. So even if we outsource biomass, for the most part, although we, you know, we still have a couple of places that we'll probably still have here, even if we outsource it, it's still the same things are happening. Anyway, in this article on the Hill, and I'll send you the citations and everything. They talk about this recently published, peer-reviewed paper in which they're attempting to quantify the health impacts of burning wood and biomass in residential and commercial buildings, industry, and power plants. And in it, they found that burning biomass and wood in buildings and industry had a combined public health burden of at least eighteen thousand deaths, higher than that of coal-fired power plants. And biomass sources are burned to produce heat and power for buildings and industry. So we're talking about for electricity production. And like other combustion fuels, pollution from burning biomass can cause asthma, hospitalizations for heart attack, respiratory disease, birth defect, neurodegenerative diseases, and death, among many other health impacts. And their research found that in am I running out of time?
Well, yeah, I just asked you if you could wrap up your comments, please. Thank you.
Okay, sorry. Okay. Anyway, what they're trying to say, and I'm sorry that I started talking. I was talking slow in the beginning and I speeded up, sorry. Anyway, the point is that swapping out one combustion fuel for another, even if we think it's carbon neutral, is not the path to a healthy energy system and a healthy environment. And so what we need to do, everybody knows what we need to do. We need to use clean renewable energy. And I'll just close by asking, what kind of a world do you want the young people you hold in your heart to live in? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll call on Bob Armstrong.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead.
My name is Bob Armstrong. I am a selectman from the town of Conway. In general, my testimony will be speaking for myself, although I will talk about the town of Conway. Like some of the other people here today, I testified, geez, is it five years ago when you first proposed these regulations? You held about five hearings across the state. I testified at several of them, mostly wanting to go to hear the testimony of who spoke in favor of these regulation changes. And it's what I'm paying close attention to today. And just like today, almost no one spoke in favor of these regulation changes. We had the Roberts family, I'm from Conway, Massachusetts, in Western Mass. We had the Roberts family from Ashfield, my neighboring town, speak in favor of these regulations because they want to keep cutting down trees. They didn't argue that this is good for the environment or renewable or clean, only that they want to keep cutting down trees. And we had some testimony that aerobic digestion is a good thing. And it's probably slightly better than burning wood to produce electricity. But it's not clean. I hope, in addition to these hearings that we're holding today, you will take into account all of the testimony that everyone gave at all of those earlier hearings about these regulation changes. You do keep changing the regulation changes and then holding another set of hearings. And at all of those hearings, virtually no one has spoken in favor of these changes. And yet, you remained determined to conduct them. Some time ago, Governor Baker wanted to run power lines down from New Hampshire, and when they rejected it, then Maine to Massachusetts to bring Quebec Hydro into our state to give us some renewable, clean electric power. Both of those ultimately rejected that. But before Maine rejected it, Governor Baker made a deal with the governor of Maine, Paul LePage. I trust you remember Paul LePage, kind of like an early Donald Trump. And in order to make sure that these, and Paul LePage agreed he would work hard to get power lines down through Maine if we would change our regulations for burning wood so that they would qualify for Massachusetts renewable energy credits. So that Maine would no longer have to subsidize the wood burning plants in Maine. Because as you know, wood is too expensive a fuel to burn to produce electricity. And it can't compete, even with natural gas, let alone solar and wind in the open market. It only can compete if it's heavily subsidized. And the wood burning plants we're talking about require that subsidy. And to make sure that these changes got made in Massachusetts, Paul LePage sent his wood burning energies czar, Patrick Woodcock, to Massachusetts, where he was installed on the DOER and has now risen to a position of power. He's in charge of the DOER. And this entire time, he has worked hard to make sure these changes were made here in Massachusetts. And this is the last gasp now to try to push these regulation changes through, despite massive opposition from the people of Massachusetts. The last set of changes you gave us had to go through the TUE for hearings and for approval by the TUE, and they did not approve them. I trust, when you're ready to really submit these changes, you will again put these through the TUE. You're changing what the TUE had hearings on last time, and they should be having hearings on these if you still insist on doing them. And when they were done, the TUE warned that even though they were not supporting these changes, you would probably do them anyway. And the TUE said the only recourse that the people of Massachusetts have is to pass the two bills that were mentioned earlier, S 2197 and H 3333, two bills that remove the word biomass totally from the RPS and APS regulations, and we are still And we are still pushing that those changes get made. I hope they get included in the omnibus bill that will come, that will probably be produced. And I hope that the legislators in our, in Massachusetts will have the strength to support those bills. So about Conway, earlier Conway had to rewrite our forest, our, our, the forest plans for the next twenty years. And the people of Conway spoke very strongly to our select board. They want to protect the forests and they don't want to log them and they don't want to cut down any trees unnecessarily. And we wrote plans that did exactly that. And because of that very powerful message from the people of Conway, our board voted as a board to support those two bills. That the, that the DCR, that all of the public land owned by the state of Massachusetts should be, should be heavily protected. And that, 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 that the word, that the biomass should not be included in these bills. So, so, so that's my testimony. I'm going to continue to try to listen and see who is supporting the, this, these regulation changes. I expect no one, or I expect there will be very few people supporting these regulation changes. But I suspect you will do what you want to do anyway, which is to push these through. And I hope our, our legislator has the strength to oppose that by removing the words biomass from the RPS and the APS. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next we'll have Glenn Ayers.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you very much. My name is Glenn Ayers and I'm speaking today as an unaffiliated private citizen, not representing any group. These are my personal opinions that I'm offering. I live in Greenfield, Mass. I'm a retired public health professional, about a forty year career interpreting, implementing and enforcing federal, state and local regulations. And I've been involved in the opposition to dirty biomass energy since several, uh, since two thousand and seven, when several large incinerators were proposed for Western Mass by the Patrick administration. Due to intense public opposition, all of these facilities, uh, that were proposed were never built. And the Patrick administration enacted very strong regulations that effectively removed clean energy subsidies for dirty biomass energy. So why are we here today? Well, we're here today because Charlie Baker, Governor Baker is a climate denier. And, and, and worse than that, Baker is a climate poser. Pretends to care about people and the climate. And he has surrounded himself with people who have been working hard to roll back climate protections, public health protections, and to slow walk the implementation of climate legislation like the Global Warming Solutions Act and the Next Generation Climate Roadmap Bill. The Baker administration had to be sued and the suit went all the way to the Supreme Judicial Court in Massachusetts. So that after seven years, Charlie Baker was ordered to implement the Global Warming Solutions Act. And we're here today because of, as some other people have mentioned, the revolving door between industry and government where agencies are captured by special interests who get to write the regulations that they want to be put in place to weaken the efforts to address the climate emergency. And we're here today because people have written these regulations that we're talking about. And the people that wrote these regulations are people who don't care about the climate. They don't care about public health and they don't care about public opinion. These regulations that were written by industry are terrible regulations. They're garbage. They're some of the worst regulations that I have ever read. And like I said, I've read regulations for forty years. These are a joke. They're basically unenforceable because they're based almost entirely on numerous sets of guidelines that are simply voluntary. And they're subject, the guidelines are subject to change at a whim. So they're, they're unenforceable. They're junk. And we all need to ask ourselves, how does an agency like DER do something like this that is so completely clueless? So intentionally in opposition to overwhelming public sentiment. We, the public, were opposed to these regulations because they are a perversion. There are perversion of the term, one small term that was put into the regulations into law that referenced low emission biomass conversion technology. And DOER has perverted that phrase low emission to subsidize exactly the opposite. The highest emitting energy generating source that many others today have said is worse than coal. This is, this is the worst example. What we're here today discussing is the worst example of executive branch corruption within the government. And the only solution to this, because as others have said, we know exactly what you people at DER, DOER are, are planning to do. You haven't heard a word or you're ignoring every word that has been said. So the only solution to this is a legislative solution. We need our legislators to hear us that we demand that S twenty one ninety seven and H three 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 be incorporated into any omnibus climate bill that is being put together by the legislature. Because this gross, despicable proposal by DOER needs a legislative solution. Because honestly, because of your activity, your individual actions, whether you have a spine or not, your actions have led to a complete lack of failure in the government by the citizens of the Commonwealth. And that's really a sad thing. And I hope you can think about that. At night, when you're trying to sleep or when you look at yourself in the mirror, that you see what kind of person you are and why so many people have to be in opposition to your abuses of power. It's a shame and you should all be very ashamed. Thank you very much for the opportunity to provide comments.
Next we'll have Mark Hanks.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Thank you. Yes. Good afternoon. My name is Mark Hanks. I'm Director of Regulatory Affairs for NRG Energy. We're a leading national electric energy supplier. And I'm here to comment on category C, the RPS class one minimum standard revisions as proposed. Um, I will just say in my comments, retail electricity suppliers like NRG operate in a highly dynamic market environment that compels them to compete every day and provide especially for large, commercial, industrial and institutional customers innovative pricing and complex contractual products. Oftentimes these contractual arrangements have terms of service that extend for periods of three, four and sometimes five years in duration. Accordingly, competitive electricity suppliers like NRG require regulatory certainty and a degree of predictability in order to effectively provide customers with accurate and transparent pricing. These are customers that are municipal municipalities, hospitals, universities and colleges. Many institutional accounts like that, that require that degree of, of predictability. Um, as we move forward, the proposed change, uh, that is discussing the minimum standard revisions were DOE. Uh, DOER amends section fourteen dash oh seven, subpart one to increase the minimum standard from two percent per year to three percent per, per year for the years twenty twenty five through twenty twenty nine. This is, um, a, a change that we think we need to have some degree of accountability with respect to existing customer contracts. We certainly appreciate the fact that any new contract could reflect these changes. However, uh, as suppliers are, will be required to pass along the incremental costs associated with these minimum standard increases. These costs, when the contract were provided, were unanticipated. They were not known and consequently would be a surprise to many of these customers, particularly institutional customers as well as commercial industrial customers. We believe that financial impact is unwarranted and should be accounted for in these regulations. Accordingly, uh, NRG respectfully encourages that the department consider establishing a compliance exemption for the provision of all existing customer contracts that are in effect when the DER, uh, rules go into effect, if they do go into effect. And to the extent that, uh, existing customer contracts are grandfathered or exempt from uh, those incremental, uh, minimum standard increases accordingly. Uh, that's the fair thing to do. It's the right thing to do. And therefore, uh, we encourage the department to consider that change, uh, in this rulemaking proceeding. Thank you for the opportunity to make these brief and limited comments and we'll be submitting formal comments, uh, by, uh, on April first. Thank you again.
Thank you. Next we'll have Kai Salem.
Oh, can you hear me?
Go ahead, Kai. We can hear you.
Yes. Uh, thanks for the opportunity to comment. My name is Kai Salem. I am the Policy Coordinator with Green Energy Consumers Alliance. We are a nonprofit based in Massachusetts and Rhode Island and we work to accelerate the transition to a low carbon future. Uh, I will say that like many of the commenters today, we also oppose the biomass related revisions in this RPS draft, but I'm actually going to focus on some of the other changes, uh, made in the proposed regulations. I'd like to put the RPS in context with, into our larger climate goals. Um, we have set a goal of fifty percent carbon emissions reductions by twenty thirty. And so far, our best guide to reach that goal is the draft Clean Energy and Climate Plan that was published over a year ago now to meet a now outdated goal of forty five percent emissions reductions by twenty thirty. Since that Clean Energy and Climate Plan was published, several of the key components have either fallen apart, taken a backseat or taken longer than many had hoped. This includes the Transportation and Climate Initiative as well as some of our initiatives to reduce emissions from the building sector like the Clean Heat Commission and the disappointing net zero building codes, which did not include a true municipal net zero opt-in. And because of all of that, reducing emissions where we can is even more important. We strongly support the update to this regulation that is required by law from two percent to three percent in the RPS. Uh, and we encourage DOER to look for other ways that we can strengthen the RPS to make sure that we're reducing our emissions from the electric sector because we are going to have to make up for the loss of emissions reductions in other sectors to meet our twenty thirty goal. We strongly believe that the RPS has been a key component of our achievement on our climate goals so far and that it will continue to be going forward. In Rhode Island, Green Energy Consumers is a very strong advocate of the proposed a hundred percent by twenty thirty renewable portfolio standard. There is no reason that Massachusetts can't do something similar here. Whether it requires legislative action and there are legislative proposals that would get close to this goal currently on the table. Or there could be more administrative work done in this regard. Uh, we encourage any overview of the RPS to make sure it includes and elevates the importance of achieving more renewable electricity at the fastest rate possible. Uh, and thus concludes the comments from Green Energy Consumers Alliance.
Thank you. Um, that concludes everyone who, uh, has not had a chance to speak. Um, so I just want to put it out there again, if, if anyone that hasn't spoken would like to testify, please raise your hand uh, now and I'll work through that list. Uh, thank you. I see a few folks have come in. I'll go to those individuals who have not spoken first before I go to individuals that have had an opportunity as time permits. Um, so in the first instance, Kate O'Connor.
Hi.
Hi Kate, go ahead. We can hear you.
My testimony, I am opposed to the changes and I, um, would like to concur with a lot of the testimony that has already been given in opposition and my contribution will be a song.
Amazing with all the things they do. Trees make a climate good air for me and you. Trees are amazing, breathing carbon in. Trees store carbon giving lots of oxygen. But forests grow old and return to their former lands. Trees create a beautiful climate and we leave them where they stand. Trees are amazing storing water in the ground. Trees are the masters that slow in water down. Trees prevent flooding and erosion of good dirt. Trees are amazing, let us honor what they were. But forests grow old and return to their former lands. Trees create a beautiful climate and we leave them where they stand. Trees are amazing, but we grow more flowers than trees. Most forests have been cut down to make space for feeding beef. Trees need to grow back where most cows are living now. It takes twenty times less land to grow plant food instead of cows. But forests grow old and return to their former lands. Trees create a beautiful climate and we leave them where they stand. Trees are in trouble, but you hear our simple plea. Do all we can to save them to heal our earth for you and me. Use recycled paper to wipe your butt and blow your nose. Use bamboo for floors and paper, it's good how fast it grows. Trees are amazing, they're the masters of drawdown. Moving carbon down to earth to store tons in the ground. But forests grow old and return to their former lands. Trees create a beautiful climate when we leave them where they stand. Trees are amazing, to build our homes and huts. Trees are amazing, giving fodder for fruit and nuts. Trees are amazing, giving fodder for fruit and nuts. Trees cause pollution, and they burn for energy. Power should come from wind and sun, never from a tree. But forests grow old and return to their former lands. Trees create a beautiful climate, and we leave them where they stand. But forests grow old and return to their former lands. Trees create a beautiful climate, and we leave them where they stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Chris Egan.
Thank you, Chris Egan. I'm the executive director of the Massachusetts Forest Alliance. We represent forest landowners, foresters, timber harvesters, and forest products companies in Massachusetts. And this entire regulatory process has been plagued with a lot of misunderstanding. We've heard some of that today. So to clear things up, the current regulations and the proposed regulations do not allow utility scale biomass power plants in Massachusetts to qualify for the RPS anywhere in Massachusetts. And that's because of a sixty percent efficiency standard that these low efficiency plants can't meet. A lot of the comments we've heard today relate to out of state biomass power plants. But the fact is that those plants could only qualify for the RPS if they switch to ninety five percent non-forest derived wood. We believe that's very unlikely in rural northern New England where there is much less of that material. So really what we're talking about is the only wood systems that can qualify, and those are very small, high efficiency combined heat and power or CHP systems. They're not power plants. They're heating systems. They heat one facility, typically using steam, and they have a bonus of creating a small amount of power by running that steam through a turbine before it heats the building. And there are two of those in Massachusetts. And the Commonwealth's research in the Manimate Study strongly supports the decarbonization effect of these systems. When these regulations were revised last year, we did not object to the environmental justice setback language. That was because like DOE R itself, we had no idea of the breadth of impact of these regulations. We assumed that they applied to urban areas. But the Commonwealth's current definition of an EJ community is so overbroad that some of the richest towns in the state such as Lexington, where the average home price is one and a half million dollars, were somehow classified as EJ communities. And what that meant is the five mile limit reached, you know, ninety percent of the state. We support the goal of protecting vulnerable urban populations that are already overburdened with pollution. And we did not support the proposed utility scale Springfield biomass power plant, and we believed it to be very poorly cited across the street from a low income neighborhood. However, what's clear is that the intent of the environmental justice setback language is quite different from the actual impact of it in practice. So the intent was to prevent giant utility scale biomass power plants like the forty two megawatt Springfield plant from being built in urban areas. But the actual result on the ground is the banning of tiny CHP systems in rural areas, as was discussed earlier. So after we became aware of the full impact of this language, we suggested to DOE R that one possible fix was to place a size limit on this language, having it only apply to woody biomass systems that produce more than five megawatts of electricity or larger. And again, the Springfield plant would have generated more than forty megawatts. We think now you could even set this as a as a single megawatt of power generation. For systems below that would not trigger the EJ setback. Language only systems above a mega or a single megawatt of power. DOE R chose instead to grandfather in the two existing small CHP facilities, which between them produce a few hundred kilowatts of power. Both of them have operated for years with no issues, no complaints, and they would have lost eligibility under the setback regulation. And so we're grateful for grandfathering in those existing systems instead of booting them out. We really think that's insufficient. We urge you to reconsider and and bring the setback language impact into alignment with the purpose for which it was intended. And finally, we believe that systems utilizing biogas fuel to create electricity, even if that biogas was manufactured from woody biomass, such as in a biochar system that does not combust wood, those should be exempt from the EJ setbacks, just as systems using biogas produced from other organic materials like manure or food waste are exempt because they all have virtually identical air emissions profile. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to phone numbers. I'll allow you to talk. Just press star six.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you now. Please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. My name is Lynn Mann. I live in Lunenburg, Mass. I'm a retired public health professional. I'm also a member of Climate Action Now in Western Mass and the team leader for the Forest Protection Team at the Sierra Club. I removal of biomass from RPS and APS is critical on so many levels. And I agree with others who are opposed to the proposed amendments for the same reason. So I'm not going to repeat what other people have said. I'm just calling in to voice one more opinion regarding the fact that biomass is neither clean nor renewable, and it doesn't matter what size the plant is. The public opposition to biomass in general and to including biomass subsidies in the RPS and APS are fierce, as you have heard today. And we cannot burn our way to a cleaner cleaner climate. There's no place, no place for biomass energy in Massachusetts, not in environmental justice communities or any communities. Biomass plants are harmful to public health. They warm the climate and destroy forests and biodiversity, and they destroy land that we hold dear. So I'm asking you to please do the right thing and remove biomass from the RPS and APS regulations. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Priscilla Lynch.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. My name is Priscilla Lynch, and I am from Conway. And I want to say how profoundly disappointed and disturbed I am that we are all here again, talking about the same subject. I'd also like to thank Bob and Glenn for their very direct and honest testimony about the political motivations for these changes. I don't feel I need to repeat in depth for you, although obviously we do because we're here again, why people do not want these changes. We want to live in a healthy, clean environment that can continue into the future and that we can an environment in which we can live in mutuality with. We cannot continue to consume our environment. And I want to speak to the intent, I believe, of the next generation roadmap, which is intended to see that we can do that. And these changes in the RPS standards would lead to us not being able to do that. And I want to speak to the proposed changes around environmental justice communities. And I want to say that this was all included in the next generation roadmap as a whole. It didn't say some environmental justice communities will be sacrifice zones, some won't. We need to treat everyone equally the same, and we all need to be able to live and thrive in our environments. And political motivations that work against this have no place in our government. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to a previous commenter, Thomas Yersean. Thomas Yersean, I've unmuted you. So if you'd like to have any additional comments now's the time.
Eric, no, I I'm just listening in. I don't have any additional comments. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next, we'll go to Catherine LeBlanc.
Hi. Thanks for taking my comment. I too, Catherine LeBlanc, I live in Cambridge. I'm a former physician's assistant, and there's no price for people's health and well-being and the planet. And as others have commented, we're out of time. I'm in opposition of biomass one hundred percent. I'm proforestation. And these need to be the policies, and we need to have comprehensive, long-term view. We can't have things be motivated by small groups. And I guess actually everyone's pretty much said whatever else I need to say, so I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Reema Lo.
Can you hear me?
We can. Please go ahead.
Okay. All right. I am not an expert. I am not a climate scientist, and neither is any state official that I know of. Not Governor Baker, not any of our legislators. When are we going to begin to listen to the real experts? Climate scientists have already told us everything we need to know. You talk about cutting trees, maybe fifty hundred year old trees. Oh, they'll go back. We don't have fifty years. The latest IPCC report told us within the next ten years, we could go over the line. Cost? What is the cost to all of us if we can't live? You know, are you thinking about the future at all? It's a very near future now. And I I heard remarks about vulnerable communities, and that's good. Except that every community is vulnerable. Every person is vulnerable. There is no other place to live. And just as an aside, in case any of you missed it, last week, it was recorded in the Antarctic, a temperature that was seventy, seven zero degrees higher than has ever been recorded before. This is serious, people. Please throw your politics out and do what's right for your family, our family, for all of us who share this beautiful planet. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Jay Cahill.
Hi, I'm just listening in. I'm very concerned. I'm a scientist. I am a longtime dretter of the climate changes that we're now seeing and just super frustrated that our state keeps going backward and don't understand the incoherence of our policies. And I just want to say amen to you, lady who the last caller. I think you said it just as as it needed to be said. We're in unprecedented territory. Burning is wrong. It's got to stop. It's killing us. It's killing our kids. And to the point of, you know, what we're just coming to understand right now, you know, in addition to the the warming, unprecedented warming of our ice caps at the poles, we're also, we're we're facing, you know, the onslaught of of dread dreadful summers. We're dreading what's to come next. We're dreading the foot of flooding that is at our own shores. Our kids' mental health is suffering so much right now, and it's not because they have to wear masks to school. It's because they know that their future has been compromised. And with every decision we make at every level, from household to globe to, you know, the next war we're fighting over resources. This is a very endangered, we're an endangered, in endangered territory. And we really have to face this. We really have to understand with every decision we make what its consequences are in in as deep a way as we possibly can. And we are, we're not doing that, and our state, for some reason, keeps rolling back to defaulting to absurd antiquated policies that aren't reflecting our best practices and our best judgments. And we, I I'm sorry, I don't have prepared statements left. As I said, I haven't prepared statements. I'm just speaking off the cuff right here, and I really appreciate everyone in this call. I really appreciate how much people care. I really appreciate that, you know, the groundswell of popular sentiment is nothing to that one grain of sand that is bombing the crap out of the Ukraine right now, and that is determining my child's ability to have children. And I'm going to be a grain of sand here, and we're all grain of sands, and we want really sane policies. We want really thoughtful, future oriented, deeply scientific, deeply technical policies that reflect our best chance at saving this system. Okay, and burning trees, that's coal. That's not going to do it for us. Okay, thanks so much. Bye bye.
That is all the hands that were raised. Are there one last call for anyone to raise their hand? I see a few. So these will be the last ones. So we'll go to John Hebert. John, go ahead.
Yes, I just had to unmute. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Right. So I unfortunately have not been listening to the front end of this conference. I was putting together a written statement, which if it would be all right, if I could read, it would probably take a minute and a half.
So that's that's fine. Please go ahead and please recognize also that there's opportunities to supply written comments as well.
Yes, thank you. All right. So I believe that that there's a very strong argument against biomass as a electrical energy source. According to the ISO New England Energy Resource Mix for twenty twenty one, wood provided just two percent of the nation of the region's total electrical power generation. Wind provided a mere four percent, solar and burning refuse each three percent. Even if our state and region were to double the energy generated by cutting down, processing, and burning tree wood, it would supply a paltry four percent of total energy generation, and it would do so at a very high cost in dollars, environmental waste, and greenhouse gas generation, rather than reducing those things. In this age when more than twenty five square miles of forest in the Amazon River Basin alone are being destroyed and burned each day, it is the height of hypocrisy to be doing the same here in Massachusetts, and especially in the name of energy conservation and climate change mitigation. As anyone who follows the news can tell you, carbon dioxide is widely recognized as an agent of global warming. Perhaps less known is this statement in the US EPA's Global Greenhouse Gas Emissions Data. While fossil fuel use is the primary source of CO2, CO2 can also be emitted from direct human induced impacts on forestry and other land use, such as through deforestation, land clearing for agriculture, and degradation of soils. The EPA report continues, likewise, land can also remove CO2 from the atmosphere through reforestation, improvement of soils, and other activities. It is also well known that methane is one of the most potent greenhouse gases on It is also well-known that methane is one of the most potent greenhouse gases on the planet, and by definition, a major contributor to global warming. Yet, according to the EPA data, agricultural activities, waste management, energy use, and biomass burning all contribute to CH4 methane emissions, that's a quote. Although natural gas is composed primarily of methane, when burned efficiently, natural gas produces primarily carbon dioxide and water vapor. Because methane contains only one carbon atom, natural gas produces less carbon dioxide than any other fossil fuel and fewer other pollutants as well. This is not to say that natural gas is an angel among demons, but it must be recognized, along with hydropower and nuclear, as the best and most scalable alternative to bridge the energy demands of today with the truly clean and renewable energy sources we need for the future. It is nothing short of disturbing that a state as progressive and intelligent as Massachusetts is even debating burning biomass to produce electrical energy when more efficient, more scalable, less polluting alternatives are readily available.
Thank you. We'll go to Vern McArthur next.
Hello, thank you very much for holding these hearings. Vern McArthur from Springfield, a member of the Springfield Climate Justice Coalition that fought off the biomass plant here in Springfield and is currently trying to stop EverSource from putting a brand-new, high-pressure, unneeded gas pipeline into Springfield. We oppose biomass for the reasons that many of my colleagues have already said. What I want to say is I am getting so tired of working so hard to stop bad things like biomass and unnecessary natural gas plants at a time when we need to be moving boldly towards positive things, towards renewables and towards programs that reduce energy demands so we have the energy, the clean energy, that can meet those needs. We need vision, we need leadership in those directions, rather than tinkering with clean energy demands, as someone has said, to protect a few small plants. So I'm asking for that kind of leadership in the context of what others have so powerfully stated is a very urgent situation to reduce carbon production and reverse those trends. And so we can have vision and move strongly in a very positive direction. Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, I do not see any further hands raised. Before I turn it over to our counsel, Ben Dobbs, to close it out, I'd just like to send my appreciation to the interpreters to translate all these services. Thank you very much. And with that, I'll turn it to you, Ben.
Sure, thanks, Eric. Just want to make sure, again, just to give parties that are on the call, if there are any parties that are wishing to testify at this time. We're in a remote context here, so in an in-person context, obviously, it would be pretty straightforward. In a remote context, we're going to move to close the hearing, which would foreclose your opportunity to offer any more comments at that time. The call will be over. You will, of course, be and are encouraged to submit any comments, written comments, which the department will accept until Friday, as Eric has previously noted. So again, if anybody that is on the call would like to offer testimony at this time, please do raise your hand so that we can account for you and can hear from you, especially while we have the services of our interpretation services, as Eric just noted. So I'd give just a minute for folks who may be on the call and deciding whether they want to testify at this time or wait to submit written, please just do, do that now. Because otherwise, we would close the call, and written comments will be your only method to ensure that your voice is heard. So we can wait about a minute, Eric, here, just give folks a chance just to make sure if they want to testify, to raise that hand.
Will do.
All right, seeing none?
Ben, excuse me, there, there are two individuals, so I'll call on those two individuals.
There we go, okay, yeah, nope, you're right. Thank you.
No problem. So first, I'll call on Miriam and Mike Kurland.
Hi, yes, I'd like to, I think I already sent in a comment. But I'd also, I'd just like to say that I think it's imperative that we stop considering biomass as a renewable energy and that we use true clean energy in responsible ways, like solar and wind, but not on lands that have other uses, like carbon sequestration and, and other services, biodiversity and other services. And we need to stop cutting down trees for biomass and stop all the pollution that's happening there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Lois Amio.
Can you hear me now?
We can, go ahead.
That's, my name is Louise Amio, and I live in Greenfield. And I would just like to echo the gentleman from Springfield who spoke of his frustration that this attempt to include biomass as clean energy goes on and on and on in the face of all of the climatic emergencies that we are seeing. At least once a week, tornadoes, fires, droughts, floods, it just seems incomprehensible to me that we are not all of us bending over backwards to use, first of all, use less energy to burn less carbon, and secondly, to protect every single tree that we have. Not only do we know that the trees absorb carbon and release clean oxygen, they also help to mitigate the temperature, the rising temperatures of our planet, which are rising at such an alarming rate to a large extent because of the little, because of the abuse that we have shown towards our forests all over the planet. That's all I want to say, thank you.
Thank you, Ben, that concludes all the raised hands.
All right, unless there are any additional testifiers who would like to raise a hand at this time, the DOER will formally close the public hearing. And again, a reminder that public comments can be submitted. There's an email address provided in the public notice and on the DOER's website, by which you may submit written comments. And again, the department will receive those through Friday of this week. With that, thank you for your participation. And it's 2:59 PM, the department will close the hearing for these regulations.
Thank you.